Thank you.
So who's, who's we expecting to be absent tonight then this evening?
Jordan.
Okay.
And Jonathan's running just a couple of minutes late.
All right. We'll, we'll kick him off the, off the board then.
Somehow I lost my Commerce City background.
Well, the beach is, the beach is just fine though, so I don't know.
Me too. Look, I'm surrounded by rabbits.
I did get the green screen up however.
You need us to try to email that image to you? If we email it to you, do you know how to spell?
You can email that to me. That would be great.
Let me see what I can find.
We can only do this.
Somewhere.
Or this.
Hey, I made it. I wasn't able to get in and John's gonna be about five minutes late. He's stuck in traffic.
Tricia, we do have, it looks like all the, uh, City staff is, has logged on.
Mr. Yosa just emailed you the same one that I'm using. I thought, I think I have the other, the tan one also, but I can't find it right now. And I'm not the IT department, so I don't know how to help you install it.
Thank you so much, Matt.
You should hit your inbox in just a moment.
Hey, everyone. Sorry I'm late. Traffic was brutal.
It's okay. We've already talked behind your back.
That's good. Can I just conclude the meeting?
We didn't settle the cases.
Did, uh, Andrew get in? I saw he was having some issues.
I am. Thank you.
Cool. All right, Alexa, are we ready to, uh, to roll?
We can go ahead and get started. Um, I think Alexa's got, having trouble logging in, but we can go ahead and get started if you'd like.
We can give somebody a minute too if they need it.
And Mr., Mr. Timms, Mr. Marin, Mr. Marin, this, I understand might be, this will be your last planning commission meeting. Is that correct?
It's correct, sir.
This last or?
Mr. Marin is leaving us.
No, where are you headed?
I am going to Nora's Design.
Okay.
I'll still be working close to the city.
Okay.
So now we gotta fight with him on the other side.
Yeah, I can't wait to see your first case.
I really don't wanna like argue with you, but I will try with all my heart not to like cross paths with you when you pour items like this.
I think Alexa is on now.
Okay, she is on.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Okay. We will now call their planning commission meeting to order. Uh, Kim, can you please, uh, do a roll call of commissioners?
Of course, Chairman Popiel.
Present.
Vice Chairman Arndor.
Present.
Commissioner Kamak.
Here.
Uh, Commissioner Douglas.
Present.
Thank you for the-
And Commissioner Yost.
You there?
Mr. Yost.
Present.
Now is there? Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, commissioners for being present. I'd also like to introduce members of staff with us present here today, tonight. Uh, Matt Hader, Deputy City Attorney. Steve Timms, Planning Manager. Jennifer Jones, Principal Planner. Brian Marin, Planner. Jamie Rice, Planner. Stacy Wessinger, Planner. Tricia Mason, Community Development Manager. Kimberly Adam, Administrative Specialist. Alexa Ulam, Administrative Specialist. And like to also welcome our alternate, um, members as well that are joining us, Angela Van Deek and Garrett Bitloff. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Can I have a motion to approve our minutes from the last meeting?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Again. We have a mo- motion in a second. I said, Adam, can you please call for a, call for a vote?
Of course, Commissioner Yost.
I vote approved.
Uh, Commissioner Douglas?
Am I allowed to vote? I mean, I was first last meeting, so.
I think abstain.
Yeah, abstain.
Um, uh huh, and then Commissioner Kamak?
Yes.
Uh, Vice Chairman Arndor.
Yay.
And Chairman Popiel?
Yes. The motion has passed for yeses. Thank you for that. Mr. Hader, can you please introduce our first case of the evening? You're on mute, Matt?
My apologies. This evening's first case is Z dash nine six eight dash two one. The applicant Metal Products is requesting a zone change from C three Regional Commercial District to I two Medium Intensity Industrial District in order to expand the current industrial operation located at seven one six seven East Fifty Third Place. Presenting the case this evening on behalf of the city will be Brian Marin.
Good evening, Planning Commissioner. Uh, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, again.
Great. Alright, so as Matt said, today I will be presenting case nine six eight dash two one for, uh, metal products. The applicant is requesting the zone change from C three to I two. Uh, the formal request from the applicant is a change of, uh, zoning for a property located at seventy two oh five East Fifty Third Place from C three Commercial Suning Designation to I two Medium Industrial. The current lot size is one point nine acres, which is about eighty two thousand square feet. The comprehensive plan designation for this site is commercial. As part of this project, the applicant is also, uh, applying for a consolidation plot as well as a development plan permit, which are, uh, approved, um, administratively. Uh, the concurrent subdivision and development plan application proposes a building addition to expand, um, their metal bus, uh, production business. Uh, here's the vicinity map. As you can see, the, um, the lot that's surrounded by the yellow in the middle of the property is the property in question currently with the C three sun and designation. A comprehensive plan calls for this area to be commercial. This is the current area of the site, and if you can see on the right side of the screen, you can see that there is a dwelling unit, uh, being currently in use. Uh, however, the applicant is also using the part of the, of their lot as outdoor storage for industrial purposes. Here are the current, uh, site photos for the property. As you can see, here's the, uh, single dwelling unit as well as the outdoor storage area, which has been cleaned. And this is the area that is south of this property, which will be the TA, um, truck stop. A little bit of case history about this place. This neighborhood was part of the original Kemp subdivision through case, uh, C dash six five dash seventy two decided made it possible for properties in the neighborhood to resound their properties from I want to C three with the possibility of river into industrial uses if decided by the property owner, which is what is happening right now. Um, the property has been in use as a residential, uh, property with outdoor storage area in the meantime. As I mentioned, uh, the proposed, uh, change in zone is for C three to I two. Uh, the applicant Metal Products International has submitted a development plan in order to expand operations currently taking place on the property directly west. Uh, the proposed change, zone change will allow the site to develop in accordance with industrial standards and will match the zoning of the surrounding areas. Here's the concept plan for the, uh, for the addition, the, uh, this addition will be performed under two phases with the first phase, uh, being uh, put in motion, uh, as soon as the administrative consolidation plot and development plot are approved. And the second phase, which will be in the rear of the property, will take place, um, according to the applicant within three to five years, uh, upon completion of the freight, of the first, uh, face of the construction. Uh, the total addition to the, to their operations will be about fifty six thousand and thirty eight square feet. Sorry about that. Uh, the proposed zoning according to DRT, um, is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan designation for medium industrial. The proposed change, zone change is compatible with the proposed development, surrounding land uses as well as their natural environment. There are adequate public services as well that are being provided to this property. The proposed zone change will be in the property in line with surrounding industrial properties in the area, allowing the site to develop in a manner that is consistent with industrial uses. And the area surrounding the subject property has been changing over time from residential slash commercial to a more industrial district, and therefore is in the public interest to allow zone change. As I mentioned, this, uh, proposed zone change is consistent with the comprehensive plan as it will allow the area to expand in a manner that's industrial in purpose. It is compatible with the area and the surrounded uses. It is adequately served by utilities and it serves and balances the uses of the surrounding area. And there is a public interest in changing the sign to matches use. As part of this public hearing, um, public notifications were sent to twenty adjacent property owners. There was a notice on the Commerce City Sentinel, Sentinel Express, and there was one sign posted for this property as well. As of March twenty sixth, staff has received no responses to the public notices. And at this time, DRT recommends that the planning commission vote to forward this request to City Council with their recommendation for approval. At this time, that completes my presentation, but I will be more than happy to answer any questions for any of the members of the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marin. Uh, I don't think I have any questions. Is there any questions from the commissioners for?
Yes, I have a question. So what's to become of the residential house that sits on that property?
Yes, sir. Uh, that house will be, uh, it will be demolished and it will allow for the construction of the complete, uh, of the addition of the, of metal products.
And the owner is in agreement of this demolition?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And he, he owns that property where they, uh, expect to expand into. Correct?
I believe that at this time, uh, Commissioner, uh, they are waiting for the approval of this zone change in order to complete the transaction.
Okay, so he's, he's in, he's in an agreement with demolishing the property and selling off the land.
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Um, and will there, I, I, I'm not gonna go into any more questions. Uh, so thank you for answering everything.
Absolutely. Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, Commissioner Douglas, have a something?
Uh, thank you. Uh, I had a question about the property. The, I know where the, where the residential, uh, house sits on that portion of land in the far bottom left corner. Is that gonna be a detention pond?
The detention pond commissioner Douglas will be on the southwest, uh, end of the property where, where, um, my mouse currently is right here. Uh, it will be of the area where the existing, um, uh, metal infrastructure, it's, um, so it will be in this area. But it will be accounted for during the development plan.
All right, so that, does that invert down or does that spiral up?
It goes down.
Goes down, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, that's all the questions I have right now. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Any further questions from the commissioners? Okay. I believe the applicant is available for questions. Kim, would you like to? Unmute Jim Nakai?
Yes, uh, commissioners, this is Jim Nakai, and I'm, uh, representing Sean Conquest, who's the owner of the property and the house that's going to be demolished. He is currently, uh, having a, uh, an asbestos, um, environmental report done on the house, so he's prepared to start demolition, um, as soon as he receives that report and it's abated.
Yeah. Thank you, Minister Nakai. Any questions for the applicant from the commissioners?
Yes, I have a question. Um, are, are you going to landscape around that particular property?
Yes, uh, Brian, could you pull up the landscape plan?
Yes, Commissioner Joes, uh, here's the current, uh, property in question. Here's the, um, here's the landscape area that will be a part of it as well as this area here to the, to the east of the property. I'm sorry. Um, it seems that by adding this, um, cube, I, I did not show the, um, the landscape that will be on the east side of the property.
Understood, and, and, and these are, what will be, what will be the per- purpose of these two adjoining buildings?
Uh, the, the purpose commissioners is to, uh, expand his metal, uh, fabrication operation. In other words, he brings in the raw materials and coils and then shapes them, uh, into gutters and roof flashings and, uh, the parts and pieces that go into, uh, roofing materials. He's just totally out of space and he's purchasing, uh, some very expensive, um, equipment that needs to be, it's already been shipped and needs to be housed in, into this phase one building.
And he's the owner of the property right now. Is that correct?
Yes, Sean Conquest. He owns both parcels, the building and the vacant land, which includes the house.
Understood. I'm, I'm, I will, this is a comment, not a question. I will say that that is probably one of the more uh, confused areas of Commerce City in, in the respect that it has both, um, commercial and industrial mixed together. Um, however, and again, this is comment. Um, I do believe that, you know, uh, landscaping and making that property, uh, more uh, how should I say this? Eye worthy of, uh, the kind of community we will all wanna become would be a benefit. And I'm concerned about, uh, mix, the mix of commercial and industrial.
Mr. Yos, why don't, why don't we wait for a commentary until we've kinda heard from the applicant and the public and then a motion's been on table, then we can discuss, you know, your, your thoughts on the, on the case.
Thank you, Chairman Paul Lou.
Any further questions for the applicant? Mr. Douglas, I see you have your hand raised.
Uh, is there a presentation by the applicant?
I don't believe there is, Mr. Douglas.
Okay. Um, I've just gone over the plans and all as far as the, the aesthetics, the trees, and that, that would that would really bring, uh, bring that area up to date as far as, um, the vision driving down, um, unquote, back and just wondering if the other property owners aren't in the same compliance or is just something that this applicant wants to do to, um, bring up the property as far as, um, the aesthetics, uh, or is this also in line of what your neighbors are doing the same thing?
Um, I think we should, I think we should be clear that we're here just to determine zoning, not, you know, uh, approving or, or disapproving of the building permit and the plans. Uh, you know, this is a, this is a zoning change, not, uh, approval or disapproval. Once it's zoned, then the building, the department, you know, the planning department is going to, um, put the regulations and rules and, and restrictions on the plan. I mean, that isn't what we're here for. We're just saying that he can be approved to build this kind of an operation from a zoning standpoint.
Right, no, I understand that. I'm just asking him that question. That's all.
Well, I think that, that question, Mr. Douglas, would probably come from, you know, the city. I think anytime you pull a new development permit, then you're gonna be asked to require to the latest, you know, codes along with regulations, so.
When it comes to zoning, just making sure that, because there's been, uh, a case before when I was on council, zoning, making sure that, that new, new applicant that came in had different, um, qualifications or they're asked to do different than the previous owner. So I'm just, that was just a question I was asking. That's all.
Commissioner, um, Douglas, just to answer your question, so, um, because they're rezoning, we do the development plan and then we review them against standards that the city has, so, um, everything in the I two district, the architecture, the, uh, the drainage, the landscaping, that has to be brought up the current code for that. So as other properties in the area, uh, redevelop, then they also would have to meet, uh, the current.
Thanks for your clarification. Sure. Thank you, Chairman.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Nakai, for joining us tonight. Looks like we had two people from the public that registered to speak. Um, Tricia, I think they're, Kim, I think the first one is Garrett Beltloff. Mr. Beltloff, would you like to?
You'll need to unmute yourself if you would like to participate in the public, I mean, in the, um, public comment part.
Okay, I think we'll move to the second person. Like I said, we have, uh, Christie Douglas. Ms. Douglas, would you like to unmute and? Any questions?
Christie is not logged in.
Okay. We did not receive any ecomments, um, on the case, so I'll now close the public hearing, uh, portion of the case. Uh, is there a motion for the case from the commissioners?
I'll motion, uh, I move that the planning commission enter a finding that the requested zone change for the property located at seven two oh five East Fifty Third Place contained in case Z dash nine six eight dash two one meets the criteria of the land development code and based upon such findings, recommend that the city council approve the zone change.
I will say- There is a motion. There is a motion and a second. Any discussion from the commissioners? Mr. Douglas, so see, you have your raised, hand raised? Any discussion on the case before we take a vote?
No, that was, he was up for the second.
Okay, sorry about that. Sorry about that. Okay, we will call for a vote. Kim, can you please?
Of course, uh, Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Yost? Commissioner Yost?
You muted, Mr. Yost.
If you-
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi.
Vice Chairman Amador?
Hi.
And Chairman Popio?
Yes. The motion has passed, five yeses in favor of approval for the case. Thank you, Mr. Marin and the applicant for presenting the case.
Thank you and have a nice night.
Thank you. Mr. Hader, will you please introduce our second case of the night?
Of course. The second case is Z-945-17-19-21. Becknell Services LLC is requesting to amend the Nexus North PUD Zone Document to include 12 additional acres of adjacent property within the development for the property located at the northwest corner of Telluride Road and East 84th Avenue Zoned PUD Planned Unit Development District. Presenting the case on behalf of the city this evening is Planner Jamie Rice.
Let's see. Thank you, Matt. I'm Jamie Rice. I'm presenting this on behalf of Ginny Axsmucker. This is a request for a property generally located on the northwest corner of Telluride Road and East 84th Avenue. The applicant is Becknell Services LLC and their request is an amendment to the Planned Unit Development Zone Document to include additional property within the Nexus North Development. Here's the vicinity map to the north. You'll see this hatched parcel right here that is the Nexus North PUD. The subject parcel highlighted in red is what they are proposing to include within the Nexus North PUD right here. As a part of the comprehensive plan, it is designated as DIA Technology currently. Here's an aerial of the map. You'll see that the parcel is currently vacant. A little bit of the case history, it was annexed into Commerce City and zoned as a part of the DIA Tech Center PUD. It's currently in the DIA Tech Center PUD and it was annexed in 2017. In April of 2018, the Planning Commission reviewed and provided feedback on a PUD concept schematic for Nexus North. In April of 2019, council approved the Nexus North PUD Zone Document and the zoning designation for the newly annexed site. And in January of 2020, council approved an amendment to allow for the modification of planning area sizes within the Nexus North PUD to allow for a 750,000 square foot or larger building and planning area 1. So their request is to amend the Nexus North PUD Zone Document to include 12 additional acres of land into the development. So as you'll see here is the PUD Zone Document. And this is as proposed, so this parcel down here, which is the subject parcel, would be designated as Planning Area 1. And that's how it would fit into the rest of the PUD right here. So here's the current and proposed boundary. We've got Nexus North at DIA up here. Currently, it does not include these 12 additional acres. However, on the proposed boundary, it would move to include those 12 acres right here. This parcel boundary would move. The proposed amendment would include the 12 additional acres in Nexus North. The subject parcel is currently vacant. And as it now stands, it's zoned as part of the DIA Tech Center PUD in Planning Area 10. And it's got a comp plan designation of DIA Technology. With the proposed amendment, this subject parcel would be proposed to be within the Nexus North PUD and it would be zoned as Planning Area 1, which is very similar to the previous designation in DIA Tech Center of the Planning Area 10. And this would comply with the comprehensive plan designation. And this would allow for a property to be combined with vacant land to the north in Nexus North for increased development potential. Also, you could also look at this as kind of a cleanup effort to include that parcel right there. So with the proposed amendment, this does not change any of the approved uses. They will not have any additional uses that they were not able to do before. They will have the same bulk standards and the same design standards for Nexus North project. In fact, the design standards, excuse me, for Nexus North are slightly more restrictive compared to DIA Tech Center. And it will result in a higher aesthetic for development of the subject property. There's no other changes proposed to the PUD other than adding the additional property. The proposed amendment includes the packet, which includes the cover sheet, which is included in the updated legal description and total land area. The project and design intent have no changes other than the overall land area. The existing conditions just includes the expansion of project boundary. Sheet 4, which is the land use plan, includes the expansion of project boundary. The land use table will update the planning area acreages. No changes to allowable uses and no changes to street cross-sections. This project required public notification in terms of mailed and postcard to adjacent property owners. The code required mailed notification to property owners within 500 feet. This minimum code requirement was met and the applicant provided notification to 11 adjacent property owners. Publication and newspaper notice was also required and it was noticed in the Commerce City Centennial. Placard and sign on property was also required and at least one sign was placed on the subject property. So that requirement was met as well. As of this date, staff has received a request for additional information from the public. The proposed PUD Zone Document Amendment meets the approval criteria in Section 251 of the Land Development Code. And the Development Review Team recommends that the Planning Commission vote to forward this request to City Council with a favorable recommendation. City staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions. I am here on behalf of Jenny. We also have applicants present and they do not have a presentation that they are going to be presenting. So that concludes my presentations. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Rice. I have no further questions. I think, Mr. Jost, do you have a question?
Yeah, will this extend into the floodplain or the flood zone?
It will not. As you can see on this...
Let me see that map again.
In this map right here, it does not extend into the floodplain. So this parcel right here is not within the floodplain.
What's planned north of that?
This is Nexus North Planning Area 10. I do believe that there is a development application currently, but I could be wrong. I'm not sure if one of the applicants wants to speak more to the proposed plan for this north parcel right here.
Okay.
I think we've already approved that, Mr. Jost. I think that was already part of our previous case.
Yeah, if the Commissioners remember last, I believe it was last maybe October, November, December, there was an amendment to revise this to allow some large-scale buildings, right? And so for some prominent users. And so I think that's what is directly north of that.
How far north of that is Legato?
He's north and east of that.
Yeah, Legato, this is the north boundary here is 88 and Legato is way over here on Tower and 88 to 96. So Legato is probably about a mile away.
I have no further questions.
Thank you. Would the... Do you see the applicant, like you were saying, Ms. Rice was on board? Would the applicants like to say any words? I think we have a Mr. Hess and a Mr. Garber.
This is Becknell. We have nothing further to add.
Okay. Questions from the Commissioners for the applicant? Mr. Douglas, I see you have your hand raised.
Yes. My question is, is Quintero Street, is that already constructed? Or that's already, I mean, I know it's already been approved, but has Quintero Street been graded right now? Or just there's nothing there?
Ms. Rice, do you know that or does the applicant know that?
As of right now, this is the most current aerial that we have and it does not look like it has been constructed as of yet, but the...
Under construction as we speak.
Yeah, I know there's a lot of construction going out there now.
All right, thank you. And then that bump out, was that open space? And is there any addition to the area to the east of the PA1? Is there any future for that or is that just going to be left open?
As of right now, this current one that is proposed to be included with this, this was Planning Area 1, I'm sorry, Planning Area 10 with the DIATC. So it was not zoned open space, it was zoned PUD for DIATC. And it was Planning Area 10, which includes a lot of the same uses which it will be used for in Nexus North, which is warehouse and kind of more vehicular usage and industrial uses such as that, warehouses and the larger scale buildings. As of right now, I have not heard any business on this east parcel right here. I...
There is an approved development going in there as well.
Okay.
Industrial use.
Yeah, and it would remain with DIATC PUD.
All right. Thanks for the clarification. That's all the questions I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Douglas. Thank you to the applicant. I think there's no further questions. We did not receive any... Actually, I'm going to go over to the public because... Did they online yet? Alexa, do you know, Mr. Bitloff and Ms. Douglas, they were the two registered?
Garrett is online. That's all I see as of right now.
Okay. Mr. Bitloff, did you have any comments for the Commission? We'll take that as a no. We've received no ecomments for this case. So now close the public hearing portion of the case. Is there a motion for the case? Go ahead. Mr. Jost, want to read it?
I don't have a motion, but I do have a concern.
We'll have a motion in a second, then we can discuss, Mr. Jost.
Okay, thank you.
Be with me, I lost my... I lost my... The reports.
I can give the motion if you need me to.
Oh, please do.
Thank you, Ms. Amador.
All right, I move that the Planning Commission enter a finding that the requested PUD Zone Document Amendment for the property located on the northwest corner of Telluride Road and east of 84th Avenue, contained in case Z-945-17-19-12, meets the criteria of the Land Development Code and based upon such findings, recommend that the City Council approve the PUD Zone Document Amendment.
I second it.
We have a motion, we have a second discussion. Mr. Jost, did you have anything that you'd like to comment on the case?
It was my understanding when we first approved the DIA development that it was going to be mixed use. And by looking at it, it seems like it's warehouse and parking. And now, I don't know whether those buildings are going to become all major warehouses and if... Or if they will house different types of commercial businesses. So my question is, is this going to be all warehouse space? Or are these buildings with the intent... And I thought the intent of the original plan was to have mixed use. So in my definition of mixed use, it's commercial businesses and retail.
Mr. Jost, I mean, the development of the north is already been seen by this Commission and approved for its use and development. I mean, what we're talking about today is the additional 12 acres, you know, that's shown on the screen here. So I mean, we're not back to review, you know, the already approved development for, you know, the parcel to the north.
All right, I got that. I understand that. All right, I withdraw my comment.
Mr. Amador? So you have your hand raised?
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to just put out there that, you know, in the spirit of a planned unit development for the highest and best use, and we have precedent sitting here in the lot that is already approved. I realize the economic development impacts and the jobs that it's going to create. So for that, I think an expansion in this corner is wonderful. I can't say it's the greatest, but it's definitely good. And so if I look at the overall northern range, there's a whole bunch of orange on the PUD map there for the long-range plan. So for that, I will be voting for this.
Thank you, Ms. Amador. Any further comments from the Commission? I would agree with, you know, again, incorporating this little bit of acreage, the 12 acres and the development to the north to the already approved process, I think is a good decision. So I will also be voting yes for this case.
Yeah, and I agree with Mr. Amador in that, you know, when you're a developer and you have the opportunity to bring a tenant in on a bill to suit, you may need more space than you have and having the additional space gives him additional opportunities and is consistent with what we thought was going to be there in the first place.
Mr. Douglas, did you have something to say?
Yes, and I would agree with that, especially the placement of this building being up against, I mean, this addition being up against the Wildlife Refuge. That's very far from Tower Road as far as visual and accessible. So this would only enhance what's already been in the plan. So I understand, you know, growth and then seeing other expansion that deals with mixed use, maybe in the middle property, but maybe towards the corner, are adjacent to the Tower Road. But for what we're here for today, this meets the criteria. So I agree. Thank you.
You, Ms. Douglas? Ms. Adams, would you please call for a vote?
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Jost?
Yes.
Commissioner Kamak?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Amador?
Yes.
And Chairman Popio?
Yes. The motion has passed in favor, five yeses, zero noes. Again, thank you to the applicant and staff for presenting the case.
Thank you.
Mr. Hader, will you please present our third case? Mr. Hader, will you please present our third case of the evening?
Of course, this evening's case is Z dash nine seven zero dash two one. South Adams County Fire Department is requesting a zone change from C two general commercial district to public to allow construction of approximately six hundred square foot expansion to an existing building located at forty-seven sixty-one East Sixty-Ninth Avenue. Presenting the case on behalf of the city tonight will be Planner Stacy Rossinger.
Thank you, Mr. Hader. Chair, members of the commission, thank you for being here tonight. As stated, this is Z nine seventy dash twenty-one. It is for forty-seven sixty-one East Sixty-Ninth Avenue, which is the northwest corner of Sixty-Ninth Avenue and Dahlia Street. This is a request from South Adams County Fire Department to rezone this property that's approximately point two nine acres from C two to public. There's an existing building that's about twenty-five hundred square feet on that site. It is a maintenance facility for the fire department and they are looking to convert this and add a six hundred square foot addition to create this to fire station number one, which would then serve this area as a fire station. So just to orient you to the site here, this is the property in question is this corner here that is currently zoned C two. There is commercial zoning on most sides of it here, as well as some public zoning to the south with Highway eighty-five running to the east of the site. Here's the future land use map showing you that there is commercial, public, and then residential expected to the north of this site. So the case history is that this site was annexed in nineteen fifty-nine, that was own commercial. Back at that time, there was a use permit issued in nineteen seventy-nine for the maintenance facility as well as a north setback variance granted by the BOA for the existing building. That structure is about five feet from the north property line. This current proposal, which I'll get into the site plan here, is not proposing to change that setback. The applicant's request for this case is to rezone those point two nine acres from C two to public. There is a current consolidation plot. These are those old Adams County lots or Adam City lots rather that are twenty-five feet wide. So there's four of them that they would have to consolidate as part of that plot in order to allow for the development plan, which would create that six hundred square foot addition. That expansion would be for essentially for office and firefighter bunk space for this facility. Here is the current site aerial, as you can see, the site is pretty much completely paved. And I'll show you on the site plan here in a minute. They are proposing to make some improvements to the site as well, including landscaping. So here's that consolidation plot is pretty, this is pretty straightforward. Like I say, it's just combining those old narrow lots here. You can see there's four of them stacked that would combine them into one parcel. Here's the proposed development plan and landscaping. The main, main things that are being created here, they are going to screen some of the utility area along Dahlia here. So it'd be an improvement on that side as well as currently all of this is pavement up here. And so making those into landscape areas. There's no proposed changes related to the access or anything like that, but kind of improving the parking lot area and landscaping as well as creating sort of a fenced patio area over here for the employees on site. Here are the proposed building elevations, kind of in the red dashed as the areas that would be added. So this is kind of that screen wall that would be on the east side of the building. And then here is the view from, if you were looking north from East Sixty-Ninth Avenue, that this would be the part that they're adding here. It's a pretty small space. You look here, it's, the existing building is about twenty-five hundred square feet. And then this red area is the six hundred square feet that would be added. So it's kind of indicating these building elevations here. So the DRT analysis was that based on the request, the rezoning is justified that the public zone is consistent with the future land use and comprehensive plan goals in that it kind of takes an existing public use and allows it to be the site to be repurposed and improved for the area that it would allow for that redevelopment and that the expansion of fire services is needed in the area. And both the consolidation plot and development plan that are concurrent applications and administrative review would be consistent with the requested public zoning. The current concurrent development will meet city requirements for design guidelines and all of those standards. The additional landscaping and site improvements will add to the neighborhood. And to that corner add some additional, you know, taking out some of that payment and putting in landscaping will add to the appeal of that corner site. And there is no PIA required with this or additional right of way. It's just any work that would need to be done in the right of way will just need right of way permits. So all six of the zone change approval criteria are met per the DRT analysis, including that it's consisted with city adopted plans, the change is compatible with the proposed development, adequate services and infrastructure are available for the property. They will have adequate provision of public uses, the change is needed. And the area where the change is requested, it's in the public interest to allow this change. The required public notification was met per the land development code and resolution twenty twenty dash thirty, including notification of twenty-four adjacent property owners noticing the newspaper and two signs posted on site. So with that, the development review team recommendation is that the planning commission recommend approval to the city council. And with that, staff will conclude our presentation, available to answer any questions. The applicant is also present if the commission has any questions for the applicant.
Thanks, Ms. Rossinger. Questions from the commissioner for staff? Okay. The applicant, would we want to unmute the applicant? Let's look, should it be a Mr. Bonnet? Mr. Rune? Good evening, Mr. Bonnet. Any, any words for the commission?
I know, we're here to answer any questions and we greatly appreciate staff's coordination of this effort and assisting us through this process. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Mr. Bonnet. I have no questions for the applicant. Do we need the commissioners? Mr. Douglas?
Yes. I don't have, I don't have questions, I have a comment. I think this is a great addition, especially with the school being built on the property catty corner. And this will also enhance the area there, especially with the light rail that's been put in. So thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Ms. Douglas. Thank you to the applicant for being present. I don't think we have any further questions for the applicant. We now ask members of the public to come forward. I think we have the two, same two registered individuals. Ms. Douglas and Mr. Bitloff. Do you have any words that? I don't think they're available at this time. We did not receive any ecomments for this case, so we'll now close the public hearing for the case. Can I have a motion for the case from the commissioners?
Commissioner
Go ahead.
I move that the planning commission enter a finding that the requested zone change for the property located at four seven six one East Ninety-Sixth Avenue contained in case Z dash nine seven zero dash two one meets the criteria of the land development code. And based on such findings, recommend that the city council approve the zone change.
There a second? Second. Have a motion and a second discussion on the case. Mr. Douglas, I think I saw your hand raised.
That was just for the second, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. Mr. Amador?
Just for a conversation piece, I know that in the past, we've looked across the street at the old Adam City redevelopment property with some zone changes there. This is an area that I grew up in and I'm seeing the development happen across from the light rail and whatnot, the high school. Generally speaking, I think the response time is going to be great for when the overall school site is there, along with transit oriented design, light rail and whatnot. And for that, it's dear to my heart and I'm glad to see the improvements in my old neighborhood where I grew up. So I will be voting for this.
Now we know where I used to grow up, Mr. Amador. And did I see that hand again, Mr. Douglas, or is that still?
Yes. Just looking at the on a staff report, it has, it has the case number and it has the date, November twenty-six, twenty twenty-nine seventy-nine. I'm sure it's supposed to be nineteen seventy-nine.
Okay.
Thank you.
That'd be not too far in the future then. We have a motion, a second? Mr. Kim, can you please call for a vote?
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Yost? Commissioner Yost?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Kamak?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Amador?
Yes.
Chairman Popiel?
Yes. The motion has passed. Thank you to the applicant and Ms. Rossinger for presenting the case. That concludes our cases for the night. We can move on to some miscellaneous business. Any commission business that we need to discuss amongst the commissioners? Staff?
No, I would just say for ease of zoom, I keep myself on mute the whole time. And when I need to speak, I just press the spacebar. So I don't know if that helps.
I tried that, Jonathan, and it didn't, it didn't work for some reason.
I didn't know that trick, so that's a good trick.
Yeah, it's fantastic.
It worked.
Well, Steve, I have a question. I don't know if we have planned a tour for the city. Obviously, because of COVID, that might be a little questionable if we had it next week. But I'd sure like to see us have one because there's been a lot of development and a lot of plans, you know, in the last twelve months. Maybe later in the summer, early fall, something like that. I don't know, what's your thought?
Yeah, right now, you know, we're still under our emergency ordinance, so we're having everything remote. But sure, we can, when the time's appropriate and when conditions are safe, absolutely. There's a lot of growth occurring. In fact, we just hit a all time record. We have a hundred and seventy-nine active land use applications in March. So we, all time, all time record. So we're not seeing a development slow down at all. So that would be worthwhile, I think, yes.
Correct. Interesting. It's a high number.
It is high number.
Mr. Hader, any legal business we need to cover?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Steve, any other staff business we need to cover?
Um, and we do not know yet if we're going to have a main meeting. So we obviously were focused on this one tonight and we'll see. We certainly have some items in the queue. We'll just see if they're ready or not, so stay tuned for that.
Great. Anything else from the commissioners?
I have some.
Good, Ms. Douglas?
Thank you. You know, being, coming on as an alternate, you know, I appreciate the council appointment to the planning. Is there any talk about a retreat or so, so that the alternates can get a better sense of how planning commission functions? Because it's a little different than the other boards and commissions and just so everybody knows the framework in how everything works as far as the protocols.
So let me, let me see if I can answer that. So since COVID occurred, Commissioner Douglas, I've actually created, and I did this with our latest round of alternates just last month. I created kind of an introductory PowerPoint that I can distribute to all the members, but it kind of lays out kind of what planning is, what are some of the roles of the commissioners and the types of cases that come before them. So that could be useful.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
You know, Steve, we had training from the state as well a few years ago. And I know there's a book and there were some pretty good presentations. Maybe we could dig those up. I think I still have the book.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all, enjoy the rest of your evening and our meeting is adjourned.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye bye.